I'd like to open this regular board meeting of the Sebring Local Board of Education. Mrs. Meeks, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Flowers?
Here.
Mrs. Green?
Here.
Mr. Latham?
Here.
Mrs. Vacchio?
Here.
Mrs. Jones?
Here.
Would you please stand for the pledge allegiance. The pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Like to welcome the public.
Hi, friend. I asked Brian to come in and talk about football for us a little bit, just because I know there have been some concerns. I did receive a phone call today from a parent who wanted me to answer whether or not we were canceling the football program. I know I had spoke to you guys about that. But after talking to Mr. Clark and Mr. Crump, it was decided that we need to continue on as long as we can. And he'll kind of go into more detail on that. And with the one parent today, I did explain that to her, and she was like, oh, thank goodness, because I have two kids, and they love it, and it'll devastate them if they don't get to play. So...
I don't know that things have changed a whole lot since August 1st. We've had a very, very small football team. And knowing the history of our program, we've started seasons with 15 kids before and somehow made it. So starting with 16 kids this year, dwindling down to 13, getting some kids back, losing some kids, we're still hovering at that really close number where it is a concern. But we've done a lot of legwork with the rest of the members in the league. Most of the teams in the league are being very courteous and nice to our kids as far as they're playing hard, they're challenging their kids to do what they need to do to get ready for their next game. But these coaches have done a really nice job of getting into their second and third unit kids pretty early in the game and not really beating our kids up with their biggest, strongest players every game. And with that, a couple of other things that maybe just as a quick update, we do have two players that are right now in the acclimation protocol. There's a five-day acclimation period from the state. They've got to work their way up to full shoulder pads and helmets before they're allowed full contact. So we have two kids that are about ready to enter the roster as members of the team. So I don't know that necessarily our numbers are going to get anything better. We're still going to be, you know, a week-to-week situation. But really, honestly, I don't know that as far as the safety of our kids go, which is the primary concern, it's any different than it was August 1st. It's still the same 11, 12, 13 kids that are almost on the field every snap. And as I've talked to other coaches in the league, most coaches go with 15 kids, 16, 17 kids, and then get the other kids a little bit of time here and there to letter them. So, for example, a good friend of mine at McDonald's said, he goes, I got really 18 kids that I rely on every week. One of those goes down against a top-notch opponent, we're going to struggle because that's a guy we really didn't want to have to replace. So most of our league plays with 18 kids going both ways, on both sides of the ball, offense and defense. And that's not that much different than where our kids are at. Most of our kids play both offense and defense game in, game out. And right now, for the kids that are out there every game, you know, it must be easy to get on a bus every week that has a reasonable chance of winning the game. And our kids get in knowing the odds, knowing what they're up against, and they get on that bus every week because they love football. And right now, because I don't know that it's changed anymore than it was August 1st, I think there's a lot of people out there that are fabricating rumors and making up stories that, you know, there's these massive meetings or there's this big town hall going to happen, and it's just, it's not true. We're monitoring the situation closely, worried about our kids on a weekly basis. I'm in contact with the other schools in our league to make sure they know our status because that's our job as a good league member, is to make sure they're informed of what our situation is with football. But right now, the status is if we've got 11 players, we're going to go play that football game. And, you know, it's not an ideal situation. We'd like to work on our participation, but that is our situation as it is right now.
Where did those two kids who were in the acclimation period come from? One of our kids, or what moved in, or...
One's a freshman that didn't come out in August, that wanted to come out now. And again, those aren't ideal situations, but those are our realities, that when we're this pressed for numbers, we take them. And we wouldn't want to deny a kid a chance to try something at a school this size either. And the other one is a student that is coming to us from outside the state. He's moving in with his grandparents here in town. So he just started this week. I spoke with Coach Palmer today, and he was pretty much in the same line. If we've got our kids, we're good to go. You know, they've got that warrior's mentality.
Did we have an injury Friday night that is keeping someone out, or not?
We have a new, a player that is no longer going to be playing, that the word hit us today, but the injury didn't occur Friday night in the game. It's an existing injury that finally the family got checked out.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms.
Thanks, everybody.
Okay. There are a few corrections to the agenda. You have all but one on your copy. And I gave our media rep their copies, so he has them as well, but I'll just go ahead and go over them anyway. One is I added executive session to consider employment of a public employee, followed by another section of corrections in case we decide to make a correction to the agenda when we come out. 9E, we added ACT, excavating for snow and ice removal. I just received that contract this morning. We use them, we've been using them. And then I deleted under 10C, I deleted 5, 6. And the one you don't have that I'd like to delete is D, Renee McGrath for the four-hour kitchen position.
Mine's closed down already.
Oh, is it? Okay. She wanted to fix that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay.
So that's 10C, so that would make comments from that, so that would be 11 and 12.
Well, we still have, I mean, we still have other items of 10. Oh, you're right. That is wrong. Yep. That's a right, right number. So that's a correction. So then, moving on, then would be 3, executive session to consider employment of a public employee or official.
Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Mrs. Meeks, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Vacchio?
Yes.
Mr. Latham?
Yes.
Mrs. Flowers?
Yes.
Mrs. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
And I've invited Mrs. Whittaker in on this.
Acted into public session at 7:11. Mrs. Just now, would you continue with it?
Okay. Four corrections to agenda, I would like to add an item. We will add 11, and that would be to hire Brandon Ellison as a teacher pending background check. Do we need to vote on adding to the agenda, adding a person?
We should, I think.
Is there a motion to add that to the agenda? Have a second. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Meeks, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Vacchio?
Yes.
Mrs. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Latham?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Comments, probably none. 6, motion to approve the minutes, the financial reports, and auditor's state letter of engagement. Since you've just received the minutes today, we're going to allow you a couple minutes Mrs. Meeks, would you call the roll, please? So, the item D on there is to approve industry credentials and to provide half-credit for each pathway. So one of the ways that students can graduate is by obtaining 12 points in a particular field, and then they need to pass a work keys exam and score 13 on them. Most districts, I mean, we're not unique in this, have a few students that aren't going to graduate. I went to a press conference today with John Bochieri and Senator Shaboni. There are close to 600 students who aren't going to graduate this year because ODE hasn't, well, not even ODE, the legislators haven't approved alternate pathways like they did last year for students. So I'm not sure who came up with these pathways, ODE, someone came up with them. So there's three different ones here. The first one has to do with security, so it's a national, it's a security pathway, so they'll learn about cybersecurity. I think it also covers like OSHA, first aid, so they can get their 12 points that way. What's nice about this, it's 40 hours, all online. So, and we, like I said, we have three, so we are going to assign them to that. We also have some juniors that, you know, are probably at risk that they won't make the points because you need 18 points on the regular end-of-course exam, so we're going to go ahead and sign them up now. Rise Up is a combination. This is a program for, like, public service, so community service, so restaurant industry, hotel industry. And then the third one is a combination of two. So it's the Rise Up, you can choose, there's four different courses in the Rise Up. You can choose two from Rise Up, two Microsoft. You can choose three Rise Up, one Microsoft, which we have the Microsoft licenses because I attempted this a couple years ago. And then the Microsoft is really difficult to pass from what I'm hearing, least seek self-portion. So this will offer our students another way to graduate, just another pathway.
Now, are these all online, then? Okay, and they'll be done here with Mr. Corby and Mrs. Everard?
Yes.
Okay.
And if they're approved tonight, then I'm going to go ahead and assign her to start the first one. That way, she's a step ahead. That way, when kids are in the lab, they have questions, she'll be ready to answer them. She's pretty good about doing that, even with tutoring, she'd sit in and take notes, so she'll be fine with that. And then the high school has already changed their intervention period in the morning, their enrichment period, to include a work keys study session. So any of these kids that need to obtain 13 points on the work keys, they'll start working with them and providing intervention so that they can reach the points they need. So, and then the other plus to this is the Prepare for Success indicator, which you saw on our report card. We received an F, but so did close to 500 districts in Ohio. So it's a difficult one to meet because you have to have a remediation-free ACT score, graduate with honors, or have an industry credential. So if we assign all juniors to have to take an industry credential, we'll have an A on the report card in that component. And they don't have to pass the work keys for us to get credit. They just have to have taken the 12 points required for it. So it'll help us out. Plus, it gives the students just another option in their back pocket if they choose not to go into college.
You mentioned junior and senior. Can sophomores do that, or is that too early in their curriculum?
They could. We're just thinking that might be a little early. Even the man from the county mentioned that, too, the gentleman that I met with, that he thought that might be a little too early because they're, you know. So we'll just go on their recommendation. Start as juniors.
Essentially, this is replacing if they didn't, like, if they didn't pass. One, how does this, I'm sorry, this is just confusing.
Okay. So in order to graduate now, there's only three ways to graduate. One is you have to score 18 points on end-of-course exams.
Okay.
The second is a remediation-free ACT score, which a lot of students don't need. And the third is an industry credential. That's the only three options the state's allowing right now.
Okay.
So we have some students, like I said, who haven't met the points. And it's really difficult to get those points later because if you think about it, when you take algebra, you're in the ninth grade. Okay, so you take your test in the spring, you didn't pass, 10th grade, you're in geometry now. In December, we're like, okay, now you need to take this algebra test again. What in likelihood you're going to pass it?
Right.
And get the extra points that you need. And the same thing for biology. You take the biology exam, you're in biology. The next year, you're in chemistry, but you still need to take this test. And they require so many points in each content area for a total of 18. Math and reading require a certain amount of points. But if they don't, and they can meet this instead, the industry credential, they can still graduate.
Gotcha.
As long as they get to 13 on the work keys, which is why then we want to have the intervention period as well. So I think, too, it might be a way, also, you know, advertising, you know, having trouble? Have you been notified that you're not going to graduate? Come see us.
Yeah. Okay. Now, how many, you said you met with two of the, with John Bochieri and Shaboni?
Correct.
How many districts in Home County are going to do this? I mean, were there other people?
Close. Most are going to probably, I mean, they need to do something or else they're going to have students don't graduate, so. And there were actually four other legislators there today, too. They had a big press conference, Channel 27 and 21 were there.
One other question, changing the subject, but also on that, the excavating. Were they reminded that there are practices and stuff on days that schools are, remember last year, the situation? Were they just reminded of that, or can they be reminded again?
They're on my list to text, so...
Okay. All right. Gotcha.
I give them the schedule, and then...
They had, they had a contract last year, too, then.
Their salt went up a little bit, but that was it.
Letter A, but the transportation, are there, is it because of a change in kids coming in or not coming to school, or...
It's just, it's required to be done in late. Yeah, every year you have to, just to improve your routes.
Is there any other discussion? Mrs. Meeks, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. Flowers? Mr. Latham?
Yes.
Mrs. Vacchio?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
10, motion to approve the following substitute supplemental contracts, detention school, and additional supplements.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion?
What level is K-12 going to be, high school or elementary?
K-12.
Are these courses all college, or...
Yes, they are.
That's awesome.
We actually added four more classes this year.
Wow.
Four more college credit plus.
That's great.
Which is also something we need to get out there.
Absolutely. Absolutely. I try to brag about it because other districts talk about their kids leaving to go to Kent State. I'm like, they don't have to leave. Destiny got her masters in three years because of it. She didn't, they didn't start till her junior year. They didn't, you know, so...
Is there any other discussion? Mrs. Meeks, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Latham?
Yes.
Mrs. Flowers?
Yes.
Mrs. Vacchio?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
11 is a motion to hire Brandon Ellison as a teacher pending background check.
Motion.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Mrs. Meeks, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. Vacchio?
Yes.
Mrs. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Latham?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
12, SLA, they are not present. Comments from myself. Just an update on the vestibules I called today. We are third in line as far as I'm looking at them to get approvals. They're hoping to have a decision by Friday. Cameras are up and working. She got hers finally installed. The only thing that I'm still waiting on is the ability to look at the cameras off-site, which is, you know, just a feature that they need to work with access to get the coding done. Because that way, the police officer has an iPad, and they can look at the cameras off-site. And then if something happens, I can always check them at home, too. Because there's been calls before. Electric, they're getting close to being done. I noticed several lights outside. We have one complaint from a community member, so I, they sent a diagram of four different lights that they could use on VO. It's too bright, I guess. It's shining in their yard, so...
Did you have any complaints when this went up at the high school? I had a question from a member of my church. He says, "It sure is bright." It wasn't really a complaint, but it sure is bright.
Yeah. The other one's a complaint. The thing is, the house is pretty far away, and I think it's just because LED lights are bright and white. So it's more they're just not used to seeing it when they're sitting in their backyard having these bright, white lights. So we've ordered one that has a bit of a cap on it, so it'll direct the light downward. I didn't want to go too small because then, you know, we aren't having the safety and security that we need either. We can, I can accommodate as much as I can, but not to the point where we're jeopardizing our own property. Or someone being on a sidewalk and tripping because they can't see because the lights aren't focused where they need to be parking on. So that's where that is. VO Friday Food Club has started up, which is a very nice service that the local churches provide, bags of food for certain families that are in need. We had a couple band shows that went really well. The trailer, I'm getting prices on decals to have Sebring Local Schools put on it, and then our Trojan head. A little perk about the police officer, I heard today as far as the SRO, there were a couple girls who weren't getting along very well. And one of them, I guess, last year would have been the kind that would have taken it into her own hands. So she contacted one of her teachers, and she, the teacher said, "I'm really proud of you that you didn't do anything." She goes, "That's because we have a policeman here." She goes, "Now I can get arrested." So if anything, I mean, aside from the security it's providing, I think we just cut down on suspensions.
Yeah.
So, right. And that's really all else, unless you have questions.
I have a question for the football field. Have we figured anything out? Like, what, two?
No.
Nothing?
Uh-uh.
Is the track open again?
It is.
Okay.
Yep, track's back open. I mean, there's a camera right there, so if it, if it were to happen again, and you can, you can zoom right in on the face. Because actually, just this last week, we had a parent get in the building after hours. So we aren't just supposed to let people in the building. So anyway, I went back, I looked at the camera, I was able to zoom in on this student's face. I sent it to Joe. I'm like, who is this? You know, I mean, it just, it goes right in. So send him the picture, and that way we can, you know, let the kids know, don't let strangers in our building. He didn't know who she was, so. I mean, and it's just common sense. You see an adult, they think, oh, it's somebody's mom, I'm going to let them in. So, but we have signs posted, too. Don't let anybody in.
One thing, I don't know, you may want to talk with the booster, the athletic boosters. Friday night's game, I was helping in the concession stand, I went over to the visitor's side. Their cooler was leaking pretty bad, water on the floor. Is that something we might want to look at, getting it fixed for safety?
I have a few things to go over. Just, you all got your auditors questionnaires, and they were changing the questions around a bit, and they wanted me to go over our fraud and cash control safeguards we have. It's hard when it's a small school to have the checks and balances. Like, if you're the larger school, you'd have one person in the office put invoices on, and a separate person run the checks for it, just as a double check. That's difficult in our situation, but I have done a few things. One is we installed a safe for the athletic director for, to keep the, you know, he has game change throughout the year, which... game change throughout the year, which is a substantial amount of money. So that's, that's in a more secure location now. Also, we have, for the credit cards and our petty cash, I also got lock boxes for those. They were in a locked closet, so now they're in lock boxes within the closet versus just on a shelf. That's for the, any deposits that come through during the day also. Our bank reconciliations and check registers, that's a new thing to have you approve those as part of the reports, as a checks and balance that you can look over things. One thing that we do is Lori, she's accounts payable and receivable, she processes the invoices for payments, but every check, when I go through the invoice list and go through all of them, you know, to check to make sure everything's good, and, you know, just looking for anything to stand out that looks unusual. And, you know, some of it is law and like purchase orders, of course. Tony and I approve all the purchase orders, we all look at them over carefully before anything's approved, before the purchase ever happens. Another thing is when like a teacher with a student activity brings a deposit in, it's recounted in our office before it goes to the bank. So they, they count it in complete paperwork, and we count it also. And also with time, any questionable time sheets or leave requests, Tony approves all the leave requests, and then they come to me, and the time sheets, you know, if there's anything questionable, I'll bring it to her attention before it would pay anything. And the credit cards are signed out, and receipts have to be brought back promptly with a signed receipt. And the receipts are checked for content to make sure, you know, it's something that makes sense for our school to be purchasing and so forth. With the receipts, Lori posts the everyday transactions, and I post like the foundation and the taxes and the more complicated transactions, there are federal grants, things like that. But I review each receipt individually at the end of the month when I go to balance. And I check to make sure that they match with the paperwork the teacher turned in. Then I see that the bank said there was that much money as well, because they sent their little receipt back also. So you have the deposit ticket and the bank receipt, and the paperwork from the teacher all to match. That's basically the majority of what we have in place right now. Due to the smallness of our office, it's difficult to have more controls, but I'm always up for ideas if you... I'm also going to start giving you the payroll list, so the others brought that up. So along with just the regular check, the budgetary checks, you'll see the payroll checks too, a list of those. Never mind. But that's all of that.
I have one more quick thing. I have a letter here that is, I'd like to send out to all staff, Joanne mentioned it to me, it's just thanking them for a great start to the school year, and briefly touched on a few things that we've done this year, so try to pass that down. Administrators as well.
Is there a motion, Tootler?
Motion.
Motion. Any discussion? Okay, by consensus, we do.
I did, yeah, it catches the table, and then it popped off, so.